Okay, all right, now being six o'clock, I'll call the Monday, August 28th meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. First thing, I'd like to say this meeting is being recorded for cablecast and YouTube presentation by Area 58 Community Access Media. The video of this meeting is not to be considered an official public record, and I've been remiss in announcing that the last probably month. All right, so first item on the agenda is we have a six o'clock appointment with MRI to talk with us about the fire and EMS consultant. We have Brian Duggan, Robert Lumer, and Robert Craig here to speak with us. So why don't I first turn things over to you, John?
So, we're looking for a study of our fire operations. We're really looking for kind of a five-year plan, 10-year plan. We have looked at kind of, I thought about three options. One is on the EMS side, potentially moving to privatization. That seems very expensive. The other is the operation that we're running now, looking at it whether or not we have the right mix of basically permanent with little volunteers. And then a third option might be working with a partnering town. We have two towns that we've had interest in. One of them seems to be more our size, and we've talked to them just roughly. They have no interest in regionalization, but they would be interested in maybe partnering with us where they would contract to do a service for us. So we are kind of looking to you as the experts to help us think through how we would do this. So we have your letter and your proposal. Maybe you could just start to expand.
Yeah.
You're the experts.
Well, first of all, let me talk about the company a little bit, and why we're here, and I'll ask Bob and Bob to introduce themselves. They always get their names confused. But I'm Brian Duggan, I'm Director of Fire Services, and as I said previously, I was a fire chief in Massachusetts for 27 years. Now, in my own hometown of West Hampton, basically the emergency manager and an active fire officer, an EMT, just because I can't seem to completely walk away from it. And Municipal Resources is a New Hampshire-based company that provides sort of operations all up and down the East Coast. It seems every time I turn around, we're going further and further south, doing things such as Public Safety Department analysis down in the Carolinas, to we have an active volunteer recruitment and retention study, multiple of them going on in Pennsylvania and so forth. So we've literally done hundreds of these studies. And years ago, I had my own company that I had sort of worked with part-time and merged it into MRI, really because it was one of the only companies that I saw that really wanted to collaborate with you as the client, work together, and some of our proposal goes to that. But also, a company that wasn't just about the bottom line, it was also about sort of, is the outcome, the study actually being implemented, and how is our reputation? Are people happy with us when we walk out the door? So those are some of the values that I saw and still see today, and that's why I think the three of us as retired chiefs work for MRI. Bob, I'll turn it to you, and if you can quickly.
Thank you, Brian. I guess I'm a rookie on board as far as MRI is concerned. As Brian's alluded to, I'm a retired fire chief. I too stay very active in the fire service, and I'm still on the faculty over at the Massachusetts Firefighting Academy. What I like about MRI, and Brian alluded to, the scope of our business, but where we really have focused is in smaller communities. Just last week, Brian and I were in a town in small, in southern Worcester County, that's looking at a similar situation. In communities that have combination departments, it's tough to get the help you need. And much as you did, John, they looked at not a true regional model, but they're looking at shared services overnight, just as I sense here is a time where it's tough. So we're going to be working with them going forward. And we've done similar types of studies throughout central Massachusetts. We tend to focus on the smaller communities, and you know, that allows us to focus in. I couldn't help but notice that a big concern of yours is emergency medical services. There is growing, growing demand for that, both the level of service and the community expectations.
Sure.
So again, I think you'll find on our team, and we're just three members of a much deeper group, we have, we try to partner the folks that come in that come from smaller communities. In my case, I had been a fire chief for about 10 years in the town of Wayland, Massachusetts. A little bit larger from here, but again, a small, smaller community, not a big city operation.
Bob?
Thank you. I was a fire chief in a community that kind of fits between the two entities here. I was in the fire service for a little over 42 years. I was chief in the town of Acton, Mass. for 22 years. It went from being a strictly a call department, to a combination department, to a career department. And I only tell you that in terms of a little bit of background, but I retired a few, a couple of years ago and started working for MRI, and since that time, I, my eyes have been open to a broader spectrum in traveling around, working with, as mentioned, a number of smaller communities. And we tend to hear a lot of the same issues that come up repeatedly, and so we're able to not only recognize them, but at least provide recommendations to those communities so that they can make decisions to move forward. And so I've been fortunate to not only do that here in Massachusetts, but up in Vermont and Connecticut and so forth, all over New England. So that's kind of my addition to a resume, if you will.
And Bob is also, continues to serve as a gubernatorial-appointed member of the Massachusetts Fire Training Council. So I think we're fairly well dialed in. On page four of our proposal, we list sort of the entire team. In essence, what that is, is that's sort of the perspectives that you get. You have a number of practitioners that collaborate to give you a perspective and ideas. I think one of the best things we offer is we've done well more than 100 of these studies. And clearly, in smaller communities, the driving issue for the last probably five years is recruitment and retention of on-call people. And how do you salvage the on-call model? Because communities really can't afford a sufficient career model. So, and then what are the steps to sort of blend the two, and things like that? But that's really the driving factors that we're seeing. And then there's sort of the impetus of shared services. So it's funny, we've probably done 15 regional studies. Of those, I think there are two that actually implemented something on a regional basis, very time-consuming, very hard to do. But shared services seem to be easier to do, and communities can also, if it's not working out, there's a way to move apart. So I think you're on the right track, John, when you talked about that. And I know in our proposal, we included privatization right from the start. I'll tell you that especially in smaller communities, we've found that privatization, there's two aspects to it. One, you can probably get it for free, but then you have very little control over the level of service or the standard of cover that you get. It's sort of whatever the vendor, if they have a unit available, they provide it from a larger community as sort of a way to help their bottom line. But when you start asking for a standard of cover, or an eight-minute response time, or 10-minute response time, things like that, you tend to, in your smaller communities where you don't have the volume and the revenue, get into stipends. And we've seen communities sort of go down the road of, gee, they're privatizing, and in the first couple of years, it's very economical. But in year three and four, when they don't have the resources to sort of counter that, it becomes very cost prohibitive based on the stipends that are asked for. So that's part of a business model that you have to look at, and you just need to be conscious of that. Where when you're dealing with shared services, you're dealing with municipalities trying to help each other and share resources that way. And in a lot of ways, I think the fire service is very collaborative, and although regionalization formally is not there, there's things that the chiefs associations do that really regionalize things and so forth on an informal basis. So we always talk about informal regionalization and some of the things that are in play with that. So we're really pleased to be here because this is sort of a different type of study. Sometimes we're brought into things where there are investigations going on, or you have different factions within the department. This is a nice study in that it's a planning study, looking toward the future, collaborating with the folks that are here, collaborating with the chief to help form a vision of what could be in the future, and then offer some perspective. One of the things that we offer doing 100 of these is that we've seen 100 different departments. And no one really gets to do that. As Bob said, it's really different when you go to Vermont and you see people that have mobile data on iPads. That is something I've never seen in Massachusetts. And you go to Connecticut, and you'll have a bar room attached to a fire station, things like that.
Same role.
So that perspective, there are some really things to be cognizant of, that you don't want that bar room. But there's also some really good ideas, especially when it comes to service configuration, resource typing, and then sort of how to work together with other departments, and recruitment and retention. You know, recruitment and retention is, it's sort of a conscious choice of communities. It has to be something that communities invest in with the idea of it's an investment in the short term to prevent some larger costs in the long term, and preserve what has truly become sort of a cultural part of the community and needs some support that way.
One of the things that's also driving this is we've made a decision to put up a police station off to the side here. That's going to, that's been approved by the town at the last town meeting, so that'll start in the spring. The question is, what happens later in terms of fire services, fire EMS services? Do we need a new station? Do we renovate what we have? So that's what's driving, let's get our operation the way we want it. Then that'll just fall out, and we can decide whether, whatever we do, whether we can afford it. Warren, maybe you could just give a little description of how we do things today?
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Nice to see you fire chiefs in the room with me. That's a big point.
You got us outnumbered.
The experience that these gentlemen have, we all can share and understand how the fire service works. For some part, I've been chief for seven years. But Puntin was by and large, since in 1974, the Board of Fire Engineers appointed a fire chief. Because even though we were told there might be a few people in town, there really wasn't all of them. So at that time, we were appointed a fire chief. Chief Walker ran here for, my goodness, until I think it was 1999. And it was no EMS. We were getting EMS from different services. Halifax at one point, Middleburg at one point, Cawver at one point. So we remained a all-call, that was never going with the, all-call force with one full-time chief. And we did a pretty darn good job. I joined the fire service in 97, at age 37, and I learned and I brought, and these guys were all brought up to the Fire One level. Of course, we didn't have the academy programs available. And they did a pretty darn good job. It was between 23 and 27 guys in town that certainly nights, it was better, and weekends were better, but, and we pulled it off. Fast forward to 1999, of course, when EMS became something that each town had to address, we started a BLS ambulance system here. And the way it went was that we, most of the people that were on the fire department already, very few were EMTs. Myself, the chief, and the lieutenant were the only EMTs. We did a crash course, brought everybody up, and we rolled out BLS. Well, you could imagine with very little experience, most having no other experience in the EMS field, we struggled, but we pulled it off. What became apparent as we went through the years was, of course, an ALS service not being available right here. Mutual aid responses for ALS services. Our partners around us, it became apparent, gladly with mutual aid agreements, they're happy to come in all cases. But it became a problem with advanced life support intercepts, because you could well imagine, they would tie their resource up, put their medic in our truck, and follow us to the hospital for a short intercept fee. And you could imagine the difficulties they had in front of their towns and their managers, how were the response times were? We had a critical patient, we'd roll automatically, try to grab an intercept, and you can imagine along the way how that can go. So it became apparent, when I became chief in 2011, I knew the situation. And of course, they were all on my door saying, what are you going to do about it? What's your town going to do about it? And I said, well, I'm working on it, but I still need you to support us, and I still need you to come. They said, we want the run. I said, no. But occasionally, I'd throw them a bone. And they understood what this town was trying to do, and they worked with us very closely. So it took until 2012, trying to manage this thing, and it wasn't working, our response times were terrible. All of the members were responding from their own home. Short standby stipends, I believe we started at about 1875 for 12-hour coverage, and then of course, an hourly wage to get them. Can't remember exactly where it was to start. And the response times were poor. So we realized we had to start taking a look at this based on all those factors that were upon this town. So in 2012, we formed an ambulance study committee, and you know, components from finance committee, Board of Select, and my team. We formed a committee, and we determined that in fact, we were going to attempt to go to the advanced life support level at an affordable cost, still doing all the standby stipends for people that stood by to, in order to cover the ambulance. It remained long response times. We did hire one full-timer, and the full-timer I was hoping to get would be the type of ringer that had a little bit of everything. And we hired our first full-timer, he was a paramedic. He had some fire experience, but I, many years ago, I know him well. And so we sent him to the academy and brought him to speed. So we rolled out with that template. Our response times weren't so great at all. Now we're getting, how do we hire in staff? ALS staff, BLS staff? What happens, of course, is all of, it's almost all that had come from the private sector. Towns around us wouldn't allow their people to work for a union, or just get the cancer presumption, all those reasons, liability, all those reasons. So we attempted to staff with outsiders. Now, I couldn't get them from all local, and it just became a control problem. Now, what are the reasons people would come to us? Some people wanted to get in the fire service. They're working, what an opportunity. Okay, so you wash my hand, we'll wash yours. But I found quick that if I invited them to the Call Academy right away, and got them started to get certified, out the door they went. And it took me about a couple of months to figure that out. So what I did was I created, I created a plan on it. It was almost like a three-year plan. Come with us, get involved, take shifts, be involved, train with us. Start an essentials program in-house. And maybe if you've worked out, you're involved, in the second year, we would give you an invitation to the Call Academy, who was kind of Fire Training Council. So that was two years. And then they, you know, they'd be done around June, and then shortly after, off they go. Again, young people, career professionals, trying to work in the fire service. So that's how, that's how we ran for quite a long time. And we knew, saw the need to be cross-trained as best as possible. We still had a core group of nine or 10 firefighters only. And they supplemented and got the job done, of course. Response times are bigger calls, you need the resources that come in, we pulled it off. But slowly, they became less available, and the levels of certification as they increased, we're trying to bring everybody up to one, two. And for some guys, they're not interested in that. They want to help, they have skills, they want to be involved, civic-minded, all of those things. But that's not at a dwindling also. So we had a problem with that in that area too. And then I understood, and I felt, and my staff felt, that maybe we should be talking now about, we'll finish out with the guys who are involved, they're fire only, but we really need to get everybody cross-trained, and levels of certification, what the fire service looks supposed to do also. So from there, it became hire guns. Bringing people in, getting them cross-trained, although they may come with it. So for that clock, we'd do two shifts while I was six AM, six AM, six PM. So for that block, I had standby people that were cross-trained. And yay, today I got both. Some days I was EMS only, or one or the other. So in the future, fast forward a few years, I sat before the Board of Selectmen, we discussed some options to bring on, first of all, bring this trailer in here, which now is going to accommodate sleep arrangements. And then also, bring in an additional full-timer and an additional fire timer. But when I sat down, we discussed it, we met with the finance committee and the town account, and we saw a way to get to that point. So we now have two people on staff, staffing either the end, whatever call comes in, we answer. And then from there, I would run shift command like around the clock, and I almost still do, which has been a very difficult challenge almost at all. So now we've increased our response times on scene. We are getting ambulances and fire trucks to a scene, and you will see, the data shows it, an average of 5.7 minutes. And that's, that's pretty impressive. This town's small in population, but pretty large in area. So we've needed that initial on-scene response, and then of course, once we get on scene, what do you have? You got a minute to tell me if I'm not there for us? And then from there, if we have to do an all-call to bring additional staff in. But they're scattered now. It is even really maybe six or seven people that are still actually in town. Three or four are fire trained, and they're very valuable, because they supplement, obviously, second call for the whole work. So that's kind of what you've seen in the evolution of how we've come. We're not, almost our fifth year, we'll be starting our fifth year at the advanced life support level. Medical control of BI is happy with us, everything's good. The state's happy with us. Minor corrective action plans each year when we've done our relicensing. Who does Puntin have for providers? I mean, we really have one. Everybody knows everything in this business. So we've been good with the state, good with our affiliation, our hospital, good all the way around. We haven't been in court. We've been, our response times have been, and our level of providers are pretty darn good. And you'll learn as you look at us, you know, our quality improvement, quality assurances, we have a strong program. And the town has in turn given us the tools we need. You know, 15-lead physio patrol, LEAGG, the Lucaston lights, video laryngoscopes, the stuff that we've all worked and engineered here, and they've given us the tools. And as a result of it, great response times, great patient care, and of course, you know, the point of entry protocols for trauma and things like that. We're able to now implement that stuff and start with cardiac care and advanced life support services immediately to make that transport decision. Because in the old days, you could make a mistake, and when you should have gone to the cath lab at Grokton, you've now gone this way. All the things you guys have a good understanding of. So that's where we are now. So as we've, we've brought, the budget has grown. It was $175,000 total when I started, including my salary. It is now $639,000. We have great coverage, we're ALS, we're advanced, but yet, how do we proceed? How do we go forward? What's the best model, model for this town to add the best price, the service best price? And this is something that myself and the board has decided, it's very important that the voters, and we understand and give, especially from a group of professionals like yourselves, that'll give us a better understanding. I have found the information, our education, through our boards, and even though the board various boards have come in, they come into my office, chief, we had no idea. So that's all those things, it's the message to get out. And that's, so that's exactly what this town's trying to do. And that coupled with a potential new facility, this is big, big stuff for this town. And this is why we've invited you guys to come in, and we'd love to see what you have to say.
Good. So the chief talks about response times and how good that is for 5.7 minutes, and I'll give you a perspective on that, that the community we were in earlier, last week.
We could go tonight.
One of the main issues is ALS coverage and a 17-minute average response time.
Wow.
In an 18, 19, 20-square-mile community.
19 square miles? That's not much bigger. We're about 15.
So very close, but those are sort of the consistent issues that communities are dealing with. So as I said, one of the things that sets us apart is we really like to work in partnership, both with the board and the chief. And in our proposal, let me just look it up quick here. Let's see, starting on page 15, I bet John's surprised, based on a phone call that he and I had, I developed more than 15 pages of the proposal. But anyway, information to be provided by the town. So chief, one of the things we wanted is as much information as possible so that we sort of, the hours that we're here, you get the best value for it. And the way we do that is with every engagement we do, we give a list of, here's the things we're looking for. So the entire team gets that a couple of weeks prior to us spending our first field day here. And then we know how the service is configured, ranging from org charts to call volumes to response times, and we can sort of dive in deeper and focus on those things. And that's something that I think sets us apart, as well as, I talked about implementation. So we're pretty pleased to say that most of our studies are implemented. The degree fluctuates, so you can have a community that they really just wanted to go through the process, and you have a zero. But we have many that are up in the 80s and 90s. So we're pretty proud of that. And I think one of the things we offer too is, down the road, if you need some help and guidance on a recommendation, more than welcome to call us up and call members of the team up and have that consultation, so within it.
So who would lead this if you were to do it?
Well, as Director of Fire Services, I would lead it. These two gentlemen would be intricately involved, as well as another gentleman, Peter Finley, who is one of the best writers we have ever seen. He was actually awarded two or three times at the National Fire Academy for an outstanding research award. So he does a lot of our technical writing and so forth. So a lot of what we do is we'll feed him the data and so forth, and then it's my responsibility to sort of go through and review it and all of that, so.
One of the things that, you know, we have seen the cost go up dramatically, but what hasn't been shown in the past, and Warren's done a good job of mutual aid, is our revenue now has gone up so that when you subtract the revenue from the cost, we haven't had a huge growth.
Right.
You know, so, and that is invisible. That's one of the things we want to make sure becomes visible out of this study.
Yeah, exactly. And it sounds like there's another component of that too, of you have your costs going up and your revenue following it, so you need to graphically show that, and what's the differential? But also, what's the level of service? What's the average response time? And it sounds like, you know, that story needs to be told as part of that. There's sort of three legs in the stool.
Well, we're not sure of, or at least I'm not sure of, is how are we doing in terms of paying our professionals vis-à-vis the towns around us? Because, boy, paramedics now just, they can go anywhere and find another town paying more. And one of the things we'd like to know is how we approach that out of the study. We've done some racing, go ahead.
If I could highlight slightly, and these gentlemen would be completely aware of this. The outside forces that are also on this town right now, oh, EMS tells you, well, really there's not as less paramedics, but a lot of them are using it. Well, we're seeing a shortage of paramedics in the national side, there's some difficulties there. And on the other side, of course, is the fire services hiring a lot right now. A lot of the guys are going away, they're retiring out. And so right now, and I know other communities are having a tough time with this too. Other towns are losing a lot of people too. So now what is that going to look like? What are the resources going to look like as we go forward? How can this town meet some of the similar situations other towns have? I mean, they're hiring left and right, I mean, it's not always you have to be a paramedic certified by what they get. As a matter of fact, if you win six months of being a paramedic, guess what? Welcome aboard, and we'll get you going. And so that, those are some of the forces that are affecting us. We're getting stripped clean. Our sister community, Halifax, they're getting stripped clean. It's been quite a deal. So all those factors now, those outside forces are affecting this whole thing too, as you could well relate to and imagine.
It's interesting that paramedic has really become the standard. Dating myself, you didn't even need to be an EMT, but I became an EMT to try and set myself apart to get a fire service job. Clearly, now it's, you got to be a paramedic. And there are those forces that just really conspire against you at times, so.
And gentlemen, we are running at the PB level right now successfully.
So if I were checking references, and I'm sure you gave us some references here, and I'm sure we'd hear wonderful things. If I, we happened upon people that had less glowing things to say, what might we hear?
Well, I think in general, if I gave you the full list of fire references, which I believe I did, there's about 10 pages worth of references that I'd say call anyone on there. I would say what you'd get is, if, depending on who you talk to, not everyone is going to like what a consultant has to say, because people have different agendas. So I'll give you a story from Bob and I. We did a project up in Stovermont, and it was really looking We did a project up in Stovermont, and it was really looking at fire and EMS, they're separate organizations in a brand-new $14.8 million facility, and how do they coexist and so forth. So one of the things that we saw and observed was that they're stuck between career and on-call. So they'd have two sort of career paramedics on shift, but then they'd have a volunteer that's paid $20 an hour, by the way. And there'd be a medical emergency. So while we were there, we witnessed a cardiac event, and we see the two paramedics go over to the ambulance, and they pull the ambulance out, and they sit there, and we're scratching our head. And then we sort of looked into it, and they will wait up to six minutes, or at that time they did, for a volunteer to come in to be a third member of a crew. So we started asking, well, why couldn't that person meet you on the scene? And you have two people there, which is the minimum, more than the minimum crew, thus you'd get on scene quicker and render care to the patient at the paramedic level and so forth. Well, when we reported on that, there was a faction within the organization that probably would have screamed and jumped up and down at that. So that's what you have, and not everyone is going to like every recommendation, but I think that if you sit back and look at the entire thing as a planning document and steps to ratchet toward improvement, it's really a source for discussion, and each community needs to make those decisions on an individual basis. But what it gives you is that perspective from outside. And so does that answer that? That you're going to find some people, no matter where you go, that love it and hate it?
Sitting up here, I think we noticed that you can't please everyone all the time.
Very quickly, the measure of when we're effective, when I can tell that we cut it right, is when I'll talk to a member of the board of selectmen, and they'll say, well, you guys did a pretty good report, but you didn't exactly see it the way we saw it. And I'll walk away and go, good. And I'll hear that same from the fire chief. I'll bump to a fire chief at a chief's meeting and say, you guys did a solid report, but I didn't agree with paragraph seven. So that's good, okay? Brian said it. We're here as the professionals to give you recommendations. You are the folks, the fire chief, board of selectmen, this is your town. You decide what's best to implement, okay? But we can come in from the outside. We have the experiences Brian has indicated of visiting, doing 100-plus of these reports. And sometimes, we all get so close in on a problem, we can't see that other way of doing it. It's gotta be this way. And the chief says, no, it's gotta be that way. And then sometimes we can come and say, well, what about this?
But change can be difficult, especially in the fire side.
I think we know that, and I think that's why you guys are sitting before us right now.
But honestly, I'd ask you to call our references, because I think all in all, you'd get some really good responses. And I think you'd also get people that said we went well above and beyond the contract to try and make things valuable to them. So, I mean, as I said, we had a multi-page proposal that sort of outlines, on the first sort of two pages, really from the conversation that John and I had, six primary items as far as the scope. And then we go further into that and define how we're going to do it, which starts with the accumulation of data, so we're all well-informed, and then goes into how we'd approach that. I mean, we can run through that, or I assume you already have it and have read it, so we're willing to either walk through that, answer any more questions, and we're ready to hit the ground running when you are.
So actually, that was my next question, I'm sure it's in there, but the timeframe on when we could start to when we would get to the end?
Typically, a study of this nature, and I'm not sure that that is in the proposal, takes between four and six months, start to finish. And if you gave us the go-ahead tonight, we'd probably, one, start talking to the chief about getting the data, assuming it's a two-week data turnaround, sometimes it takes a little longer, depending on, you know, how difficult the data is to amass. We need two weeks after that, and then we'd have our first field day. So we were looking at about a month, month and a half to start, and from that point, if you tell me you need it for budgetary consideration or whatever, we're looking at four months. If we're really getting deep into things, especially when we start talking shared services and exploring it, that might take the six-month timeframe.
So if we were looking at shared services, does that include talking to other towns or researching them or understanding their operation?
So yes, it includes talking to other towns, but let me be clear, it doesn't include negotiating agreements and so forth. It's conceptually talking, are they interested? What would be their concerns? What do they see as a cost-revenue analysis, things like that, that we could use in a planning sense and turn back to the chief to then further explore. From that, I'll tell you, there's another community that has engaged us right now on a separate contract to develop shared service agreements with target communities that they're looking at. So it can be done, but it's sort of, the depth of it is a separate contract.
So understanding you don't do the negotiating if we get to that point, but are there sort of broad recommendations of the structure, of how it might be structured, and the cost? Is that part of what you would do?
We look at it as a third party. If you're pondering negotiating, then we can look not only at your data, but we can look at that other community and say, you know what? It's our recommendation that you go forward. They seem willing to engage. It looks like this could be mutually beneficial. However, if we see caution areas there, we're going to alert you to those as well.
And a lot of times, we'll be pointed in a direction of, we want to share services with community X. And when we talk to community X, they have absolutely no interest whatsoever in doing anything, and it's just spinning your wheels. So I think through this study, what it would be is sort of an evaluation of feasibility and looking at what's your best bet to then pursue. You can then pursue those through the town, through the chief, or if you wanted to, we could certainly do a separate contract for that. I hate to link one contract to the other because it seems that we're looking for additional work, but we're here focused on this tonight.
Yeah. Who in the community do you normally talk to beside the fire EMS people?
Typically, we'll talk to board of selectmen, members of the finance committee. We're going to ask you to identify who you want us to talk to, who the chief wants us to talk to. Obviously, we're going to talk in the fire department, to the command staff, to if not everyone in the department, maybe a group that consists of representatives, or everyone just to get their feedback, members of the police department. And then it sort of depends on, what do we find? Where are we going? What's the scope? So with this scope being focused on facilities and EMS, we'd want to talk to other stakeholders in the town relative to facilities, other EMS providers in the area, the state, things like that. You know, to identify what are the problems, opportunities, the proverbial strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. But that's where it becomes a partnership too. So if we're not seeing something, we want to sort of be pointed in that way.
Sure.
Here's one of the biggest problems that we have, is we'll set up a field day, and we'll come down, say we're here based on distance at 10:00 AM and want to sort of work through, or if we're at a call department, we might come in the afternoon and stay into the night. But a lot of communities will be here, and we're sort of, okay, we did two interviews with the board of selectmen, and we met with the police chief and the superintendent of schools, but now there's downtime for two hours while we're waiting to meet with other people. We really rely on you in partnership to point us in the right direction for who's valuable to interview. And to then structure that. So, all right, we have a two-person team down here today, you go here, you go here, and here's a half-hour interview, and here's the next interview, and so forth. We're going to want to look at the facility, ranging from apparatus, looking at, you know, sort of maintenance records, what's the quality of apparatus, what's the ISO rating, and then facility, what are those issues? So again, I go back to my own hometown, they sort of drafted me to be on the building feasibility study for a new fire station there, so sort of well-acquainted with some of the engineering things. And a lot of what we do is partnership with engineers for deployment analysis, station location, so we're well-versed in some of that as well, as well as on a personal level, so.
Do you, the field day, would you do that on a Saturday, or does it have to be during the week?
We're pretty flexible.
Most of our people work out of town, so it's hard to set it up.
So there's probably a plus and a minus, if you want us to talk to the police chief, superintendent of schools, town clerk, are they going to be here on a weekend versus?
They'll be here.
Yeah. So.
We can make it work.
Well, Brian's, yeah, I think Brian's trying to point out is the fact that, you know, we want to tailor the study to meet your needs as we work in the community. So we have a certain amount of flexibility in doing that, you know, to accommodate different schedules, different needs, and so forth.
Yeah, one of the, one of the things I hope that comes out of this is that through this, we'll sort of, sort of get of a town cohesiveness around what exactly we're doing. I think that's sometimes been missing, and we haven't had a good way of really talking it through. So this is, I think this is going to help us and the town.
And I think this starts a discussion.
Yeah.
You know, as Bob said, one of the worst signs of a study is when the board of selectmen totally loves and applauds the study, or the fire chief does, there has to be that there are different perspectives, and there's going to be a balancing point.
Sure.
But if the study starts a discussion, it starts positive movement, then you're on the right track.
Now, will you come back to us with one option, or will it be several options with a recommendation, like good, better, best, something like that? Or is it just kind of, this is the way we think you should go?
I think it depends on what we find.
Okay.
So while I can tell you, based on experience in small towns, that privatization may not work well, and we probably wouldn't come back with that option, you may have a couple of options that do work well. And one that produces a different level of coverage and service for a different cost, and then you need to sort of balance which is better for the town at that point. Or we may find, gee, based on availability of paramedics and capital resources, there is really one path that we think you should go on, and then we'll recommend around that.
Great.
Typical study has 27 or so recommendations is about the average. So I always sort of put that, when we develop sort of a report, we develop it at typically a management letter that covers different areas and has statistical analysis. I try and be brief and say, okay, it's going to be 20 pages, and the last one we did ended up at like 50 pages, because it was so much data to really bring forward and tell that story. So I think that's about what you could expect, is there's 20-something, 30-something recommendations based on observation. And then there's a document that sort of helps the department and the town move forward on some of those that provides the story and provides a path forward.
Okay. In your contract, you've got travel times not included and consulting. What is, what would be the consulting that would not be included in the contract?
So on travel time, I'd have to look at the specifics of that.
6250.
Right. But I think, I think what that is, is basically if you ask for additional services, that our rate is 125, half of that for travel. So additional services are, let's say now you asked us to...
You broaden the scope of services.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right. What we've proposed is contained. Beyond that, and an example of that is just what I said, the other community asking us to then sort of negotiate with other communities and talk to the firefighters and talk about shared services on a regular basis. That's not in the study, and that would be either a separate contract, or what a lot of communities do is say, we really just need this help, do it on an hourly basis, we'll see where it leads, and that's why that clause is in there.
Okay, so...
It's actually there for an option for you. Say, for example, we deliver the report, and you say, chief, but we just need to take care of this one item of 10. Then you have that option to engage us.
Okay.
To expand the scope of services.
Okay. All right, so for what we're talking about, everything should be covered in the contract?
Yes.
Okay.
Warren, do you have any questions?
I think these guys pretty much covered it. I think they know what we're trying to do, and they have experience with towns such as this, and they also have a clear understanding of the nature of the fire service, which is a big piece. So I think I'm good for it right now, and I appreciate that comment.
It's like fire chief heaven with three fire chiefs.
One thing worse than a room full of fire chiefs is a room full of police chiefs. But other than that...
Well, it's nice to have a room full of fire chiefs and there's not an issue, you know? That they were just getting together, we're talking.
We have to play nice. I mean, we're pretty good at that.
Yeah, absolutely. So we appreciate the opportunity to come to meet the chief and yourselves, and we look forward to working with you, and just let us know one way or the other.
We will.
We're ready to hit the ground running.
So your availability is, you'd be ready to start immediately?
Yeah, I mean, honestly, I think I have 14 active projects right now, but I have enough resource depth that I just need to sort of slot a timeline on when can we expect the data, when do we need to be there and assign folks. The team I proposed is available within that scope.
Excellent. Great.
Very exciting.
Well, thank you so much for coming.
Thanks for having us.
Appreciate it. That was good.
Thank you. Good to meet you.
You gonna walk them out?
Yeah, you can have.
This one's John's, we can probably email you one, or scan the email to you.
He'll email it to you.
Okay. He'll email it to you, he said. Go see it?
The next one, I do.
Thank you.
Yes, eight. So we'll see you in a little bit, chief.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
He gave it to me.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, well, why don't we keep moving?
He emailed this to me.
Perfect, so you're all set then? Okay, great. All right, so we've got a 7:00 PM, are we still on with the board of assessors? Let's, we'll see.
It is not clear to me.
Yeah, not clear to me either, so if they show, we'll, we're on, if they don't?
Somebody walked on the hall that way I got out.
Okay.
We should be the only ones in here.
Yes, we should be the only ones in here for that one.
Somebody could on the phone.
Sure.
All right. Somebody could on the phone.
Okay. All right, so updates and discussions, community paradigm, executive search for town administrator follow-up, is there anything?
I haven't heard anything back from Bernie, and I don't even know if it's been posted. I haven't seen anything.
Didn't, or in one of the emails, he said that the interviews have gone well, there were a couple of issues that he would like to meet with us, so I wonder if we shouldn't get him on the schedule for...
Well, I sent him a note asking for some days.
Asked him what's your availability, yeah.
Oh, that's right, I remember that as well. All right. So maybe that would fit in on a Monday night, or if not, we seem to be willing to do whatever we need to do.
Exactly. Okay. All right, so we'll just wait to hear from Bernie?
I'll follow up with him again, because I want to make sure, if he's posted that and he's starting to talk to people, we got to make sure that it's posted here and on our website.
And that people know about it.
Yeah.
Okay, in case someone calls. Not that they should, but they may, because I think Bernie's the contact. All right, employment opportunities, fire clerk interviews. Do you want to wait till the chief comes back?
Yeah, when chief comes back. I see, he was going to talk to wage and personnel to just solidify that, and then he's made a decision, so.
Oh, terrific.
Barbara and I have talked to the people, and we're fine with it too.
Excellent. Awesome.
They're all there.
Okay. All right, so solar update, anything?
We received a check for something like $3,400 last week. You all got the email, we don't seem to know what that's for. I wrote to Ray O., our representative, he said he would check, he would get back to us. There we go.
Is that from the Sin Copia? Was it from Sin Copia, 34-something, or? I had part of the letter, and there was no check with it.
I think, or the treasurer received a check related to CEC solar. I'm waiting to hear from Ramo, or Ray O. I'm also waiting to hear from Ray O. on the legal document and on the, on him getting info for us for the valuation. So it is all in their ballpark, and...
It wasn't for $4,500?
No, different.
Okay, because that's the net metering credits that we get, and there was no check with this one.
Totally different.
Okay. Just wondering, there wasn't a...
So it's a little frustrating, but you know, the ball is in their ballpark, and it's up to them to, I mean, it's to their benefit to get this rolling.
Absolutely.
They know it and we've made it clear to them.
Okay. All right, I skipped over fire and EMS.
Just hold it. We did get that aggregation.
We did, we got an email today.
That's in correspondence.
Yeah.
It's happened.
Perfect. Okay, so fire and EMS, hire consultant, we are working on that. We've got our final interview tonight at 8:00 PM and then we'll have a tough decision to make. Townhouse legal strategy meeting follow-up permit application process and requirement update. And I saw you got something.
We did indeed. I came in about 3:30 and honestly, I haven't had a chance to fully evaluate it.
I didn't have a chance to see it either.
Let's put it on for next one.
Yeah, let's hold it, yeah.
And I actually, I should share with you, because I live at a place where events go on, I will file a disclosure of apparent conflict of interest. If you're willing, I'd love to keep working on this.
Yeah, absolutely.
So I will work that through. Rich did get a fair amount of information to us. I will try next week to coordinate a little with Board of Health and see if we can make a package out of this.
Perfect. Sounds good. Wolf Rock Farm follow-up. I don't think we have anything, do we?
Well, in correspondence tonight, the building inspector had concerns about a stairway and that'll come up in correspondence.
Okay. All right, Town Council access protocol letter. I think we just need to put one together so that people know.
I was looking to you.
Oh, okay. I can, I'll do that tonight. So the, everybody that are, you know, any town board or department that needs Town Council, we are available to authorize you in.
I thought the way you described it at the last meeting was right on, so.
Okay, so that's what we'll do. We'll put it in the letter. I'll send it to you guys to review.
Best to come to us, time-sensitive issues just on the line.
Exactly. All right, Old Colony Planning Council Rural Policy Commission survey. This is a Survey Monkey survey and it's from Old Colony Planning Council. We're in the running for a rural community's grant. I believe the grant will be to do some road upgrades over on Lake Street and 106, I believe. But we need to complete this survey. There was so much information that I didn't know. I'm not sure what the best course of action is on this. It's asked for Board of Health information on this about septic systems. I don't know if, if we want to try to work through what we know and then ask the Board of Health to complete their portion of it. I haven't gotten through the whole thing. I stopped because I was putting no, 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 because I didn't know the answer to the questions.
Maybe we should just take, if you want to send it to us and we'll just go down and put who should be responding.
Okay.
You know, like Board of Health or Building Agent. And then we can start figuring out who's going to drive it.
All right. What did you think, Mark?
It sounds right to me.
Okay. All right, so I'll forward the, Mark, I think I already forwarded you the survey to put it on the agenda. So I forwarded you the survey and then we can all take a look at it and, and make some recommendations next week.
Did you say that with Lake Street and 106?
You know, I'm not really sure. I know it's going to be some road improvements and I believe that that is the area, but I can, I've got actually an Old Colony Planning Council meeting this week and I can get more information. So next week I'll have more information on that.
I can add that to the agenda.
Perfect. All right, Silver Lake School easement and special legislation. This was a request from, was it the superintendent?
Yes.
Yeah, that we grant an easement and then Charlie Sealeek had some follow-up questions and we were copied in that. So they're asking us, I believe, to support this special legislation for a easement over at Silver Lake.
Yeah, I just don't, I mean, it sounds like something we should support, but I don't quite understand it, how it affects, you know, Jones River where Silver Lake is.
Do we want to have Maureen or Jason come in and talk to us about it?
Gee, I, I think that's always good.
And as I remember, the letter from Ms. Joy maybe mentioned when that was going to be discussed and hopefully one of our, our school representatives will go into that. Yeah, if they could report to us, that'd be good.
All right, I'll reach out to Maureen and Jason and see if either one of them are available to attend our meeting on 9/11.
I'll actually, if that meeting, if the Silver Lake School meeting hasn't happened and if possible, I would try to attend that as well.
Okay. Do you want Maureen to let you know when the next meeting is?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay.
Do you want to reach out to her, Ray?
I can. I'll send her an email tonight when the next meeting is. Okay, Letter of Support for the Clean Energy Training Project.
Which is what?
I have no idea.
Where'd that come from?
I think you asked me to put it on the inj.
Oh, I did. Oh my gosh, what a knucklehead. Okay, this was another thing from Old Colony Planning Council and they had asked us to support this clean energy training project. Do you want to hold it until next week? And I'll email it to both of you so you have a chance to read it? Okay, so let's hold that. That's funny.
It's not time-sensitive.
It's not time-sensitive and.
Were you including?
You got it, absolutely. When next meeting is. Okay, so we still have five more minutes. How about correspondence?
I'll tell you a cute story on that though. One of these, I think it was Old Colony Planning Council, the Rural Policy Commission, the ATD radio interview this morning, he picks out stuff and he picked out that one and like three minutes before the going live on the radio, going down, I said, I don't know anything about that.
Did you have to pick that one?
So I told him I had until sundown to get it figured out.
That's funny.
All right. Correspondence?
Yeah, let's do it.
We're there. All right, warrants paid. TW Rademski Plumbing, $265. National Telecom Systems, $75. Webby Engineering, $3,880. That was surveying the new land we're obtaining. Columbia Gas, $80. This is the letter confirming that the municipal aggregation has gone through and the fellow that's coordinating this would like to come in and talk to us at some point and he said he'd set up a meeting and.
Perfect.
I think, I probably was in on the beginning of this and it was probably three or four years ago. It turns into a big deal, but everyone in town will probably save about 60 bucks a year.
Yeah, anyone who participates in the program.
Yeah, who opts in. Massachusetts Municipal Association Legislative Breakfast, September 20, 15th, 22nd and 28th. On the 15th, it's in Marshfield. I will go to that. And there's a list of other towns in the area. It's a nice chance, the legislators are there, they're, they are good at listening and it's really interesting, the degree to which the issues that different town selectmen want to bring up tend to be, you know, the same thing we all suffer from, unfunded mandates and, and the rest. But I will certainly go to that on the 15th.
Oh, terrific.
I think. Oh, actually, so I guess we'll have to fill that in. Let me just confirm that that's going to happen. Yes, it is. So.
Where is it?
That one's in Marshfield.
Perfect, so not too far.
Just one of you will go? I'll do that one.
Yeah? You'll do that?
Yeah.
Okay. Let me, I'll just get it on my calendar.
And then I'll scan it and email it to you.
Very good. Thank you so much.
But the municipal aggregation goes complete with study? Are you, are you going to invite him to a meeting?
The way he worded it is that he, we'd like to set up a meeting with the Board of Selectmen to catch up. So I don't know if that means he's going to reach out again or, maybe you could reach out to him and that we're anxious or her.
Were you copied in on that, Bree?
I think that came from me.
No, I, this was.
Yeah, it came to, it was me, but I think you guys were copied in on it. I'm not sure if Bree you were, but if you weren't, we'll get it to you and we'll schedule something with this person.
This is a letter from a company named ISO ISO. It is letting us know our public protection classification is O3 slash 3Y and goes on to talk a lot about what this classification means as far as insurance, but it really doesn't say anything about the classification. But it looks, this was addressed to Dale and it looks like a sort of a routine annual classification. Okay, this, I think, is a, this is a letter from the Atwood Family Irrevocable Trust, which I think we talked about at a previous meeting.
Yeah, I think it was last, our last meeting.
A change in ownership of a property on Proscop Strye. And this notes, or Bree has noted that we, that town have the right of first refusal. This is on 66 acres, which contains a 15-acre cranberry bog. It's under agreement for $500,000. I guess we have the right of first refusal probably because it's under farm use and so.
Does it come into us first?
61A.
And then if they, then that can go through.
Yeah.
He met me last week.
So unless, I think maybe we have to decide whether we are interested in purchasing 66, we, the town.
It would be nice if we had the money.
I think the money just decided that one.
Yeah, I think so too, unfortunately. Are they negotiable?
Five thousand maybe?
500,000?
No. That'd be a.
So I met with him last week and we went up to the assessors to get the process and everything. So he rewrote the letter and what he needed to put in to it to us, what they were doing, that was broken up.
Okay.
And then, so we have to vote if we want it or not? And then I can go ahead and do the next.
I think, I'd be comfortable making a motion that we would decline our right of first refusal.
I'll say.
All in favor? Aye.
And too bad we don't have.
I know, too bad we don't have the money.
Oh, I, and it did say, what it did say is the new owner expects to use the land for the same purposes as previously.
Perfect, that's even better.
Which is probably actually a very important point. This is documentation from Tara about business certificates. I think this relates to the Center Street Farm and I think we resolved that along the way, so I don't think there's anything there that needs our attention. This is from Assistant Town Clerk Tricia Dederman to Bree. It is a business card from a fellow named Thomas LaSueur of Energy Conservation and apparently has, he has let us know about grant money. We are entitled to being a green community. He says we haven't completed any grant work for the last three years. Perhaps one of us knows something about this. Not I.
Not I.
Not I. This is probably something Dale would have taken care of, but I.
Yeah.
I can reach out to him and see what grants are, we're eligible for. Can I have that?
If there's something there.
Thank you. Or do you want to scan it?
I'll.
Perfect.
Okay.
Because that Tricia did.
Okay.
So I, this was previously referenced tonight. This is from Tom Millius, a, a copy of a letter from Tom Millius that copied Board of Selectmen and Board, and Board of Health. Tom is acting as the building commissioner and inspector of buildings and it concerns the condition of a set of exterior stairs at 163 Center Street and he goes on to say they're unsafe and need repairs.
Thank you for copying us in.
K and P Law document enclosed is the filing of a disclosure statement for the transaction of a public agency concerning real estate. This concerns the portion of the property on 18 Elm Street that we are getting.
Is that the easement?
You know, disclosure statement for transaction with a public agency concerning real property. So I don't know if it's the.
Do we need to sign anything or do anything with it?
Does not seem to imply so.
Okay, perfect. Good, thank you.
This is a letter to Chief Borsari and the Board of Selectmen. It's dated August 18th and it says, as of today, 18, I hereby resign my position effective immediately as captain of the Plumpton Fire Department, signed, Robert Law.
Sorry to lose him.
Last piece of correspondence, the Plumpton Halifax Express. There's a full-page thing on Silver Lake Regional School about free and reduced meal costs and how to go about that. There's a letter from Colleen Thompson on page seven that I'll talk about more in Rants and Raves. The 4-H Fair, there's the centerfold. It's about doggies doing their agility skill. The main thing I'd bring attention to is all these dogs are smiling.
Yeah, they're beautiful dogs.
They're having fun. The people look like they're having some fun.
They do.
The dogs are having a lot of fun. Bus routes for Silver Lake and Dennett are in there and that's that.
Excellent. Okay. All right, do we want to go get the assessors and get, get moving? Thank you.
Do we want to go into executive session now?
Yeah.
Yeah, do we want to do?
Sure. All right, we're going to have an executive session with the Board of Assessors and then we'll be back. We've got an 8 o'clock appointment, but I don't think we're going to be in executive session all that long. What do you think, maybe half an hour, 45 minutes? Yeah, maybe half an hour, 45 minutes. So we can come and get you before we.
Would you make sure the sound and the picture is off?
Okay. All right, so I'll make a motion that we enter executive session for the purpose of discussing strategy relative to pending litigation, which is the Cisco abatement appeal and/or tax board determination. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, a roll call vote. Mr. Traynor?
Aye.
Mrs. Joy, yes? And Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Yes, okay. All right, we're now officially in executive session, so we'll be back soon. We're ready and we'll get back, back to it.
Actually, we can vote out of executive session even before she's on.
Okay. All right, I'll make a motion that it is five of eight and we return to open session.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote. Mr. Traynor?
Aye.
Mrs. Joy, yes? Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Aye, okay, we're back in open session.
So we have four minutes before eight.
Okay, so we've got an 8 o'clock appointment with Attorney Ernest Horn to discuss fire and EMS consultants. Do you want to quickly go down Board's Goals for Coming Year? See if we have anything?
Which, which?
Do you want to?
Yeah.
Work down the, okay. All right, so dates to remember, we are not meeting next week, but we are meeting the 11th, the 18th and the 25th of September, possibly meeting maybe Tuesday of next week if needed. Board's Goals for Coming Year, financial management, still waiting for the plan from the Collins Group at Public Safety. Do we have anything?
They met last week. I sat in on the meeting. They're moving forward. I was actually really impressed. I was actually really impressed, they spent a lot of time with the architect trying to decide on which heating ventilation system. They're really, really looking closely at every dollar and the cost benefits of that and pretty cool.
Very good committee, yep.
They are meeting Wednesday.
They are meeting this Wednesday, I'll miss it, but I'll listen in after the fact.
Okay, perfect. Technology, anything?
I do, but it's going to take a little more discussion.
Okay, then why don't we hold it until after we're done? Grants, I'll follow up with Old Colony Planning Council on that Rural Communities Grant and the grant that we, the Green Communities Grant that we discussed tonight to see if we have some eligibility there. Volunteerism, I don't think we've got any new updates?
I have something in a couple of weeks, next meeting.
Okay, all right, minutes, eight, seven, seventeen, I think we're going to hold those because we don't, we haven't gotten those yet. We haven't seen them.
You should have gotten them, I sent them twice.
I haven't seen them.
No, okay, so let's, we'll hold that till next week. And then we had executive session from eight-twenty-one and open session from eight-twenty-one as well. Those were written by Mark, I thought they looked good. Did you have any?
Didn't we approve those last week?
We approved different ones last week. These are the ones from last week.
Yeah, these were last week's.
Yeah, you did, you wrote back that you'd received.
Yeah, you said they look good.
Okay, then I approve.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the executive session and the open session minutes from eight-twenty-one as written.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we still have got two minutes. Do we have anything? We could do rants and raves.
We could do rants and raves.
All right, all right, well, I'm going to start with, I'll start tonight with rants and raves. We're going to mix it up a little bit. And my rave is Chief Borsari. That how great it has been to work with him throughout this process and how he has embraced bringing on a consultant to help us and that it just, it's made the process so nice to have you be, you know, I feel like we're all on the same page and it really has made a world of difference, so thank you.
Yeah, and our community needs us to be on the same page.
Absolutely. So thank you, thank you so much for that. Okay.
So mine is page seven of the Plimpton Halifax Express, a letter from Colleen Thompson, former selectman. A really beautiful letter titled Discover the Art in Yourself. Starts out about a poetry group at the public library, goes on to discuss the various arts that we all have and mentions one of them, maybe your art is in the garden shed, maybe your art is knowing what to say in a meeting that cuts to the crux of the issue, clarifying and pointing the way to a solution. And so, one, the letter reminded me of what an amazing poet and writer Colleen was and the degree to which she cut to the crux of the matter on what we occasionally are able to do up here as far as arts, so thank you, Colleen, that was great.
Okay, last but not least.
I have a rave, I have a couple. This morning I turned on my radio and what do I hear but W H T?
Oh no, you heard that.
I have a rave from Mr. Russo, he did a really good job. I was listening to it, I was thinking, hey, this is really good.
Was that on one take?
Yeah.
Boy, it's live, you have to watch what you say.
Good for you.
And my dry sense of humor, which constantly gets me into trouble, is live.
In fact, I thought, you know, he cut you off at the end, I was hoping he'd keep going.
And now the Mark Russo Show.
Each week it's gotten a little longer, so it could be Plimpton News. They could have a half hour of content out of me easily.
I also have a little brief for Lenora Swanson, our former town clerk who turned ninety-one.
Wow.
So, and they had a little party for her, so that was very good.
Nice. Happy belated birthday.
And the last thing, maybe I can send out to the newspaper is, every once in a while I pick up Eugene Wright's volume, Tales of Old Plimpton. And it used to be published in the Silver Lake Regional, Silver Lake Newsletter, paper. We used to, it used to be called the Silver Lake Southern Paper.
Silver Lake News.
It's News, that was it. And I noticed that in the last issue Susan Basile was writing, she does, writes for this Buzz Around. It's an internet newsletter. And Susan is the historian for the town of Halifax. She's also my wife's cousin. Her father was the historian for the town of Halifax. He wrote the history of Halifax, there's a book in the library if you go. As did his brother was the town historian, so they have. And I was thinking, gee, it would be nice to have, since it's the Halifax Plimpton News or Plimpton Halifax, to have that column and a corresponding column using the Eugene Wright tales. So I don't know if there's copyright issues or what the issue is, but maybe you could check into it, Jim.
Great.
Yeah, terrific. Okay.
Okay.
All right, so without further ado, I will turn things over to John and invite Attorney Horn to.
If you want to come up here, attorney, we've got a speaker so you can be heard there.
Thank you.
I don't know, Warren, you might want to come up too and make it easier.
Sure.
So we are looking into a review of our whole fire services EMS situation. We're trying to do a operational study of how we should be looking out over the next five years, ten years. Part of this is, we've just had voted a town meeting that we're going to build a new police station here. And that's been approved. And the follow-on of that is that we're going to have to make a decision on the fire station, whether we have a new one or we renovate what we have. And we want to make sure before we even start down that road that we know that the way we're pursuing the operation of the fire EMS is the right way to go. So we're looking for people like yourself who have experience in this to come in. We've looked at kind of three options, or maybe not looked as much as just thought about them. Privatizing the ambulance seems to be very expensive. Running the station as we're doing now with more permanent and less volunteer. And also potentially sharing services with a sister town. We've talked to two informally. One of them would be interested, they don't want to do regionalization, but they would be interested in maybe contracting so that they would do the service. We'd sign a contract with them. Before we do all that, we want to make sure we know what we should be thinking about and doing. Cost is obviously a consideration. And then there's the whole issue of, you know, people issues and how we do the right thing. So that's why we reached out to you. And we knew that you had done a critique of the previous ambulance service study that was done. And I wasn't on that at the time, but the feedback we got was, questions you raised were valid and seemed to play out. With that, maybe you can give us a little.
Sure, well, first of all, I'd like to say I love your flag. As a proud dad of a United States Marine, I appreciate that. I've got thirty-one years in public safety. I have personally been a fire chief in Massachusetts for more than a decade. Police chief for almost two decades. I'm a licensed attorney, I've done plenty of these studies all over the place, police and fire departments. And although they are sometimes controversial, people are not happy with the results, I can tell you that not a single one of them has ever been successfully disputed. They have all been exactly on the mark and, and not that I have a crystal ball, but based on a great deal of experience and understanding, most things that I predict will unfortunately happen. I have my first doctorate from Mass School of Law. My undergrad is from Western Newland University. An adjunct professor also of Public Safety Management and Criminal Justice Courses, Criminalology at Becker University, Becker College in Worcester. So I have a great deal of experience, past president of the Law Enforcement Council for Central Massachusetts, ran the Major Organized Crime Unit for a task force, ran the fatality team, very, very involved in fire department issues. So I have quite a bit of experience and certainly plenty of education.
So if you were, as we reach out, what would be your process for coming in and taking a look at Plimpton and?
Sure. What I did for you with the ambulance was kind of a side thing, but normally what, most, really all of my studies, the preferable way to do it is from top to bottom. I evaluate your structure, your policies and procedures, your management, management style of the chief. I interview every single person that works for the fire department. They're the janitor, I interview them. We go through your vehicles, and when I say we go through your vehicles, I have a certified mechanic that comes in and goes through your vehicle. He's underneath it, he's inside it. We go through all of your maintenance records, we go through all your policy and procedures. We look at all of your ambulance records, we look at your breakdown on calls. We go through everything, we go through every piece of your turnout gear, every piece of equipment. We look at your hose testing records. We really do, and frankly, I think we do something that no one else does. We go through every square inch of your operation. And I think I sent you an example of a report I did.
Yeah.
And you can see how in-depth that is. Great deal of photography, we review everything, we tell you if you meet the NPA recommended standards. We go through everything. And then I usually interview the finance committee, or at least a representative, to see what their thoughts are on finances. I always hold at least a two-hour window to hear from the public. And we ask that, you know, we ask that that be advertised. And we get input from everyone and spend a great deal of time with the chief. I want to know the chief's insight, I want to know what he thinks. And then generally when I'm done, I will meet with him first. Not, not to change anything, but to make sure that he knows what I'm going to say prior to me saying it. It's just a respectful thing. And of course, if there's something I've got, I have that's inaccurate, then I, you know, I'll hear him out on that. And then if there is a liaison from the board, I do the same thing with that liaison. I kind of, we do an informal sit-down, go through it, and then I'm ready to present. The unique thing besides my experience is I'm also a licensed attorney and I do a lot of municipal work. So I also have that, that ability to provide legal advice, not just, geez, you should think about this, but you need to run it by town council. I will provide legal advice as far as fire department operations, whether it be labor issues or some other issue. So we bring, we bring the whole thing to the table and I think if you just look at that example, that's what you're going to see.
Do you have a team of people?
I do, I have retired fire chiefs, retired state police officers, retired town accountants to go through the financial records. I have a variety of people at my disposal who are either current or retired public officials with, between all of us, we have hundreds of years of experience.
How long would this process take, would you give?
Assuming that I have access to everything that I asked for and everyone's cooperating, I can usually get it done in thirty to forty-five days. We run into some problems and it might take a little longer. Sometimes it goes quicker. It really depends on scheduling, when I can meet with people. Sometimes, I'm not sure how many employees he has, but sometimes that can be a little problematic. If you've got a lot of employees and they're part-time, you've got to work around their schedules and stuff.
Sure, sure.
But normally thirty to forty-five days I'll be done and fifteen days after that, so sixty days at the top you'd see the report. If you needed it sooner, then I would get it done sooner. If you had a town meeting come up and say, geez, we really need it by such and such a date, we'd accommodate you.
Yeah, no, we don't have a town meeting. In turn? I don't know if Warren, you know, briefed you a little bit on how we run our operation.
Warren and I had had no communication other than when I was here doing the ambulance study. We talked for about five minutes out in the lobby. So I really don't have any particular information.
Would you like me to just do a little summary?
Yeah.
Well, certainly as you know, we were able to achieve and quote ALS ambulance service. It's about to enter its fifth year of licensing with the state. We have been able to provide a transplant support care around the clock. There was a few lapses here and there that we covered with people standing by, an officer at home responding. But we have been able to keep it at that level. And as a result of that, we have been able to attract some very qualified providers. The difficulty is, and some of the dynamics that we're seeing in the FISRs, which I'm sure you're fully aware of, is FISR services hiring right now in a big way.
Retaining.
Yeah, exactly. And as a result of it, the smaller communities are, we're losing deals, Plimpton, even Halifax. And it's continuing to grow and it's, we're losing our shirt at times. So it's become a control problem for me to bring new sets of people in. And for various reasons they want to come, mostly from the private sector. They want to get in the VA service. So that training curve, that control problem is a repeated effort. I just started an additional six recruits. Three are paramedics, four basic, some have fires, parents, most don't. So, so that training curve is, it's been this up and down thing that we've been experiencing. As far as our ambulance service license, the state OEMS is, we've had small corrective action plans each year, very small administrative stuff. We've been transparent with them, we're listening to them. And as far as our affiliation hospital to BI, our medical patrol, transparent, wide open. And as a result of it, we are giving good providers, good service to our community. And we're not getting dicked by the state, we're not getting dragged into court, and we're providing good service to our, actually very good service. The level of equipment that the towns allowed me to purchase through the warranty of the one we went to advance life support, gave us some very good things, fifteen lead physio-controlled monitor, Lucas device, video laryngoscopes, the tools we need in order to serve out, and a new ambulance too. So that's kind of a picture of where we are right now, how we're operating. But of course, these outside forces that are coming in in this town, you know, we also, and let me back one moment, we have also hired, we had the original for a full-time. We have added another full-timer to part-time. But there's been rollover in that too, going to more communities. Better health insurance is enough for a lot of these people to go. So we have made some decisions on making it more of a combination department. And it's helped us initially and it's working well, but one thing I'm seeing now is, well, it's been obvious right from the beginning, everybody works everywhere else.
Yes.
And very few people are actually on the fire department in town anymore. It's five or six, three or four of them are fire only and they still provide a vital role when we need to get apparatus on the road and things out there. But by and large, I've always tried to maybe make everybody a combination, you know. For these, this set of shifts, I've got a combination people, we answer the calls. But what happens after that, additional resources, additional calls overlapping, it's been very hard to backfill that stuff. So those are some of the things we're seeing, to the point where I'm strongly believing now, and I, we've had to wash, a lot of guys did retire well eventually and some weren't comfortable with the whole of this thing too, and they make their decisions. I'm strongly leading to starting a new recruit program to potentially attract in-town people, fire only. Some of my offices may not agree with it, but I believe now is the time where we could potentially get some people in town that want to get involved. See how they work out, start them fire only. And if they want to go for the, fine, if not, that's okay. Because when I have to make a decision to get apparatus on the road, that I may commit my engine and my tanker to put a fire up, this is a problem. If I can't get my tanker operation shuttle going, I can't get additional apparatus, this is a problem. But we are answering our calls in much better times. We now have the trailer out here where they stay, we have the facilities. They are responding from the station, they have to be on shift. Twelve o'clock, six P M., six A M., six A M. to six P M. So as a result of it, our response times have increased dramatically. And I can now.
Increased?
Shorter response, better, better response times. To the point right now, and I certainly have the data to back it up, we're getting fire trucks, at least, how it works is if an MVA comes in, the duty crew, the two will take one and one, ambulance engine. So we're getting fire trucks on scene much quicker. The second thing is we've improved our response times to an average of five point seven minutes. And as you know, that's better than the national average. And that is a result of the changes we've made and the tools the town has provided us with this facility, with better staffing, with increased budget, and the budget has grown quite a bit also in the process. And it's given us a better service to our community. But the, and again, I go right back to the outside dynamics that are now affecting us are beyond our controls somewhat. And that's where we're experiencing some difficulties.
And that's, that's common everywhere. Competition, you know, that's, that's common. What they did in Massachusetts a few years back with, on the police side, because the academy is very expensive with this for a firefighter or a police officer. And what they did was they said, they passed some regulations that if you didn't stay a certain amount of time, you had to pay back for the academy, so they're doing some of that stuff. We haven't seen too much of that yet on the fire side, but that's something, you know, that you have to consider. Because what happens is these people get trained and then they go somewhere else. Because of course, as soon as they're certified firefighter one, firefighter two, they'll go somewhere else where maybe the pay's better, maybe it's a bigger town, more action, particularly if it's the younger, younger guys and gals, they're looking for the, you know, where they're going to get tested. Do you have IMC?
Yes, we do, yes.
Okay, so we can look at your record response times there. One of the interesting things is you said that you have a five point.
Five, five point seven minutes.
And is that, is that with a full ambulance crew?
That is, with PB, we continue with PB, yes. If it's just an ambulance, a full crew, correct.
Okay, all right, okay. I wanted to make sure that we weren't looking at arriving on time, but with only one.
Oh, absolutely, no, right.
There's, there's lots of issues in the profession. There always will be, and it is difficult. And the smaller towns have a difficult time properly staffing their fire department. Some of the bigger towns have these problems. I had, I had similar problems and, you know, we were considerably larger. It's, it's just the nature of the beast, there's so much competition. But you're right, if I had to guess, you're probably getting a lot of people from private ambulance services.
That's correct. And then that's the incentive for them. And then that's the incentive for them. They want to get into the private, into the fire service. Okay, well, that's fine, and we will deal with it, we will allow it, it's a great opportunity. But here's the thing, one thing I learned day one, is we're willing to let you come on, it is an invitation and an opportunity for you. In turn, you will provide us with some service that you attain on your own in the EMS field.
Sure.
So what I was doing was I would, okay, let's get you to the academy, let's do this, let's do that, and then gone.
They're gone, yeah. You become the training capital of the area.
Right, and in small towns, two cities.
Yes, no question.
So I recognized that right away. So now, it's, when you come on board, show us you want to be here. Before my taxpayers invest their $2,000 worth of equipment to you, you're going to give something to us in turn. Come on, get some shifts, get involved, train, start our enhanced essentials program. That takes a year. And if, and if you like it, and you fit in, and you're involved, and you're dedicated, in the second year, by the end of, you'll get an invitation to the Plumouth County Fire Training Council, one-two program. And then from there, it's another three or four months, and then, then they'll be sitting with the certifications, they'll go. So we're at least getting about a two-and-a-half-year rate of return on these people. And it's worked rather well. But now, with the dynamics we're seeing, they don't even have to have their paramedic, they can be close to it in another town.
Yes, yes.
And that is something that's beyond our control.
Because you probably spent $10,000 on them, and they're, you know, they're like, okay, we'll take you, we'll grab you.
Right.
There's different things you can do. You know, one of the things that you can look at is employment contracts. Is it a unionized?
It is not.
Okay, so there are different things you can do, but it is, it is very challenging. But, so what we try to do is find ways to perhaps make the pay more competitive if it's not, and then think of other ways where you can get people to stay. And then of course, you can always look at regionalizing or by contract. I've been involved in regionalizing dispatch centers, fire departments. So there's some stuff to be said about that. And I do, now I take off my consultant hat and put on my lawyer hat, I would tell you that you want to try to always look at contract work. So if you decide that's a way you want to look, I would be able to give you, you know, legal advice on that as part of the study. Because when you have a contract, they tend to work better. Because it is in fact a contract.
We've talked to two towns. One is more interested in doing contract, they don't want any part of regionalization.
Yeah.
And so we would need some help around that, you know, if...
Done plenty of that. And, you know, part of the problem when you regionalize is you create another authority.
Exactly, and that's bureaucracy.
And you lose control, the other town loses control, and sometimes that can in fact be very difficult. So I always recommend contracted services, I think that's a better way to go. But, you know, the stuff the chief's telling me is stuff I hear everywhere I go, and it's, and it will still be a problem here, years down the road. But there are ways to try to deal with it, try to find a way to navigate around that. And sometimes it's sharing employees with another town. Sometimes it's things you do there where you both say, well, they'll work in both towns as a call firefighter, and we'll split the cost of them going to the fire academy. So there's some different things that you can look at. But first, you've got to look at your house, see if everything's in order.
Exactly.
See how your equipment looks. And frankly, what we do is we give you a snapshot of the health of your department. And as I did in the past, they give you some recommendations, short-term goals and long-term goals.
What kind of, what would be the cost of doing something like that?
Well, based on my understanding of what you're looking for, it's basically a full-scope evaluation, so I would probably say $18,000. And that includes, if I give legal advice, I don't, I don't jump up to that $300-an-hour rate, that's just part of it.
You said that includes legal?
Yeah, oh yeah, that includes everything. That includes expenses, everything.
That would give us some idea of what kind of things we should be looking at if we did want to approach another town in terms of sharing?
Yeah, well, first of all, you always want to look at, is it a contiguous town?
Yeah.
Which generally is the way you want to go. There are some exceptions, based on what it is you're going to do with each other. And then you always want to look at what are there for resources? As an example, do you have a ladder truck?
We do not.
Okay, so you want to be talking to a town that has a ladder truck.
They have a huge ladder truck.
Yeah, so those are things you look at.
This is like dating.
Now, if Plinthen has something that is particularly nice that maybe this other town doesn't have, that's a bargaining chip. You want to look at how much of your boundaries are together, how many roads can you get into each other's towns? You always want to be careful if it's a town that there's only one road in and out of each town to each other, because if that's where there's a major event, and you can't get to other issues in the town. What are the dynamics between the chiefs? Do they get along, do they like each other? And, you know, what's the dynamics between the boards of selectmen? Those are things you want to look at. But whenever you negotiate, you want to make sure that it's equal footing. You don't want to come across as the subservient town. You know, what do we have to do for you to contract services? You want to be on equal footing, that's the whole idea of contract negotiations, you don't want what we call a contract of adhesion. Contract of adhesion for simple purposes means, here's what we are offering, take it or leave it. And you have to be careful, because sometimes a larger town will say just that. You're the one in trouble. If you want us to bail you out, it's on our terms. I've seen it all, believe me. And so you don't want that to happen. You want someone that's skilled in how to negotiate on this stuff, which certainly I've done plenty of them. And you want to try to have fair footing, that they're going to give you something, but there's something that you're also going to give them that they need, besides just your money.
Would you be the person actually involved in this, or would you be assigning somebody else?
Involved in which part?
In sort of, you know, doing the interviews, doing the study?
So the study will be a combination, myself, I oversee everything, I will be here. Obviously, any legal issues will only be me, because I'm the attorney. But no, I will have, as an example, I could crawl under your truck and spend two hours under there and have absolutely no idea what I'm looking at. But I have a certified mechanic who works full-time on public safety vehicles, who will come in, and he, well, the pictures that you saw on that thing, he knows what he's doing. So I have people that do that. I have a retired fire chief that is very extremely good on the records-keeping, and happens to have also been a trainer for IMC. So he knows your IMC system.
What's IMC?
That's their records management system.
Oh, okay.
That you're paying probably $30,000 for. And then probably $10,000 a year maintenance. He worked for them also, when he was a fire chief, so he knows your system inside out, and will probably show you all kinds of things that you never even knew existed. And yes, the police chief can come in on that meeting as well, because he'll show him things that he never knew existed. I have a retired town accountant. She's fully certified as a town accountant for the state, for DOR, and she knows financial records of cities and towns. That's what she did for 25 years. So I have a variety of people that will do their specific little area. But the management stuff, for the most part, I handle that. I will be the one who will probably be involved with 90% of the interviews. I do have a retired captain from the state police, who, when he retired, he was in charge of professional standards for the whole state. Prior to that, he ran the DA's homicide unit for 25 years. If I have someone that I think is a challenge to interview, he probably will be the one interviewing them. Because he's extreme, that's what he does, he's extremely good at interviewing people. So we rely on a lot of different people, because it's important to get different perspectives.
So we're struggling with the various models that we might do in the next five to 10 years, whether shared, or privatizing, or continuing as we are in one form or another. But in your report, you would look at the pros and cons of each approach.
You will have the pros and cons of each of those.
And ultimately, would have a single recommendation or...
Well, you know, I try to be really careful about that. I'll give you the pros and cons. If you tell me that you want me to tell you what I think you should do, sure, I'll tell you. But I usually prefer to give you a really good understanding of everything, and then let you make that decision. You are in fact the select people of your community. You're the ones that the people voted to make those decisions. So I would show a great deference to the board, but if you said, you know what, we want you to tell us what you think we should do, I'll tell you. But you'll know, you'll know all the different angles. You'll know the good, the bad, and the ugly of everything.
You're the fellow that did an informal study for us as the ambulance...
Yes.
Yeah, I sat in, albeit I wasn't a member. You were pretty clairvoyant in that one, I think you called it just the way it went.
If I was that good, I'd be a millionaire. You know, I have an awful lot of experience in this stuff. I've been in a lot of towns. I've been in big towns, little towns. I ran the law enforcement council for 65 cities and towns. When I say I've seen it all, I really have seen it all. And if you have a very good understanding of history, you have a good idea where the future's going to go. So for me to look at what I looked, you know, looked at here, it was pretty clear to me where you were going to be headed. And I'm not surprised to see that that's exactly where you are now. I think that every study I've done, there have been people that hated me, people that loved it, but in the end, every, I think virtually everyone has always said, you know what?
You were good at sort of seeing the problems that were going to come up, and were good at seeing that it was going to be more expensive than we expected to be. Are you also good at sort of seeing the way out of the chronic problems that you see everywhere?
Well, I'll certainly tell you what the pitfalls are. I'll caution you if I think you're headed into greater trouble. I'll try to give you the best, the best direction to go, but I really, I'll give you the good and the bad of every direction. And I will tell you the good and the bad. I'll say, listen, this is a really good idea if you, if this is what you're trying to accomplish, but here's the downside of that. And then, you know, you'll make that decision. One of the things I do provide is I'll come back for, up to four, I say four hours, but whatever. I'll come back again, there's no additional costs during the year. If you want me to come back and meet with you again, or you want me to do a progress, I don't charge for that, I consider that just part of it. And you can call me 100 times, I don't mind. If I think that someone's taking advantage of me, I'll say, hey, listen, this is, you know, I've been to 15 meetings, I've had 12 calls from you guys each day, maybe we need to talk. But I really kind of take the position that when I leave, I don't forget about you, I want you to succeed. And so I'll be available, and I'm not, I don't nickel and dime you, you just call me, and like I said, I'll come back for a couple of meetings, whatever, if you need me to speak at something. But I try to give you the best direction to go. But you all know, working in the public sector, that there are tremendous constraints on you. Whether it be laws, regulations, town bylaws, and of course, the finance committee, the voters, town meeting. So you can only do so much. All of those other groups have to kind of get behind you, for you to be successful. So we'll try to, we'll try to stay in the right direction, but ultimately, you have to build support for that. I mean, if, if the argument is that you need to double, and I'm certainly not suggesting that, I've never, ever said double a budget, but if that's the issue, you're the ones that have to sell it for the taxpayers. So I'll do everything I can to steer you in the right direction, but you ultimately have to lead the charge.
How specific will your plan be? Will it kind of lay out, this is what the steps we need to take to get there, or is it basically just an overview of?
So I'm going to give you an overview, and then I'm going to dive down, as you've seen that, very, very deeply, and tell you where I think there's good and where there's problems. And then I'm going to give you really a step-by-step plan on how to move forward, if you choose this direction. If you choose that direction, I'll give you a step-by-step plan. Now, if you tell me somewhere towards the end of it, we kind of think this is the direction we want to go, well, then I'll spend more time on that. And I'm also of the opinion that if you call me three months later and say, hey, you know what, we chewed on it, and we've kind of kicked it around a lot, we really want to look more at this, I'll give you some help, we'll do some more work there. Again, at, you know, no cost, provided we keep it within reason, I'll certainly give you some more work there. I want you to succeed, I want you to be happy.
We do have, we're building a new police station. We think we're going to need either renovation on a fire station, or a new fire station at some point. Is that part of your evaluation?
I will evaluate your facility, I'm not a structural engineer. So we will evaluate facility, we'll take a look at it, we'll tell you what we predict you need for size in the future, and things like that, male-female separation. We'll give you all that stuff, but will I tell you that you should renovate this building based on its structural analysis? No, I won't, I won't do that. But I, but I will give you a good rundown of that building.
Okay. Do we have references? Have you supplied those?
I don't think anyone's asked me for anything. I'll be happy to send you some references.
Could you?
Yeah, okay to send them to you, because I have your reading.
Yeah, perfect.
And then I'll send them to mine. I'm the reference guy.
Well, we need to be consistent.
That's important. And I'm assuming, of course, that you're, I don't know if any of these bids are under the threshold, but obviously, mine is, as far as... Any other questions?
How quickly could you start?
I probably could start as quickly as you needed me to, but I'd like two weeks. But if you said, we need you to be here next week, you know, again, the customer's always right, we want the customer to be happy.
No, it's going to take us, it's going to take us a couple...
Yeah, this is right.
We'll make a decision by the middle of September.
Yeah, yeah, so I, if you made a decision the middle of September, I'd be able to start for October 1st without, without any issue.
Okay.
Okay.
And I think we'd prefer, we'd very much prefer that, I mean, we'd love to get the results, but we want to get it right, so there's no overwhelming rush that we know of, knock on wood, or a moment.
And, you know, what I would ask is that someone's assigned as a liaison from the board, and then kind of keep you up to date on how things are going. I don't tell you all the particulars, but I do keep you up on date how things are moving.
I've been sort of filling that role for the board, so...
Yeah, so I'd be happy to, you know, we would generally talk, and of course, if there was anyone that you thought I needed to speak to that I wasn't aware of, I would ask you that.
We'll go through and figure out a list of who we think. Warren, you have any questions?
One thing, this is all falling on our tenure right now, this current board and myself. And we see there is decisions that need to be made, so we can get it right, if that is even possible. And when we're looking for a five or 10-year plan, based on some of the other issues, like a building we may be looking at, and what's the best level of service at the right price for our community. So it's all kind of falling on us, that we're going to take the time now, and I firmly believe that is the way to do it. It's not necessarily just what the current board feels, or what the fire chief feels. You need that third-party review from professionals, so that the voters can look at all this stuff, sit down and make an informed decision. One thing I have learned is, by and large, a lot of the voters really don't know what a fire department is like, or how it's designed. They want to know, but it's very complex and very misunderstood at times. So this is something we're trying to bring forward and make transparent, to inform them. And again, information is huge power. And when that study went off the last time, we did get quite a bit of that information out. And as a result of it, the town got behind us and voted that, and got us to where we are today. So that's, this is, there's timing going on here. It's all falling on us, in our tenure here, so that's what we're trying to do, is make the right decision to protect this community and move forward in the best way.
These studies are great tools if they're used correctly. I occasionally will end up somewhere where someone wants to get rid of someone, there's a vendetta. And as I always say, if you're looking for me to be your tool for your vendetta, you're looking at the wrong person. I have in the past, unfortunately resulted in the fire chief losing his job, but that's not something that could be changed. So if, you know, the bottom line is, you'll get a very fair, unbiased report, you will like it, some of it you will, some of it you may not like, I may be critical of you. The chief will like some of it, and I have no doubt he, there will be some that he probably will not like. But that's, that's what an objective, fair report is, I'm not on anyone's side.
Yeah, that's great to hear. I don't have any more questions, do you have any more questions?
Do you have any more questions?
Well, you're the boss, I was told outside that you're the one that's really in charge here.
Who's that, Bree?
Bree, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Tells us which way to march.
Exactly, where to go.
What's your position?
I'm the assistant.
Oh, so you really are in charge.
Yeah, she really is in charge.
I have a full-time paralegal, and I listen to her.
Yeah.
She keeps me out of trouble.
There you go.
Where are you traveling from to come here?
Mendon, I live in Mendon.
Oh.
Yep. Southwicks Zoo, my son, my youngest, you know, it's kind of funny, I have, my oldest son is a marine, and he wants to kill ISIS, and my youngest son wants to feed baby kangaroos at the zoo. They're very, very different, but yeah, I live in Mendon, I have since probably 1992.
Well, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
I don't advise in Texas anytime soon.
No, I don't think anybody does.
Good presentation.
Thank you so much. If you have any questions, let me know.
Thank you, thank you so much for coming. Perfect.
Can I use my phone?
No relatives.
I have some relatives I couldn't use.
I don't have one on.
Okay.
Do you feel that I'm a little one with you?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
So we're going to discuss a little bit, the four candidates tonight?
We could. Briefly, yeah, briefly, yeah, absolutely.
Good friends around. Yep. We go over to the remaining college.
Really?
Do you want the chief to stick around?
Yeah. You want to hang around?
Can you stick around for like five minutes? Yeah.
Mr. One, thank you so much for coming.
Thank you, chief.
Pleasant to see you again. Yes, sir. Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Well done, thank you.
Nice to meet you. There, we're still on the line. We'll have a chat later.
Okay. What did we say?
Thank you, sir, glad you asked to meet you. Thank you, boss.
Thank you.
I will...
Can you pass that down to Bree?
You got it.
Back off my desk, and onto her desk.
Thank you very much.
Do you want to just do a quick recap? Four very different presentations.
I need to think a little bit.
Well, I don't think we have to decide tonight, yeah.
Okay, so what's...
I don't think we have to decide, maybe we can narrow down, at least in terms of calling references. I mean, I came thrilled with the two presentations tonight.
Yeah, I am too.
I am too, I agree.
And the others were fine, but there's no doubt, I'd be very comfortable, assuming references were okay, with either of these two.
Yeah, they're quite different.
Yeah.
But I think the references will be really important.
So I'm glad to...
We need Warren's input.
Yeah, what do you think, chief?
I concur on that also, based on the four I've heard. Of course, I know Mr. One a little bit from the last study we did with Coast Mike, you were part of that also, and he was very insightful, and he was very unbiased, and that's certainly something we're looking to do here. It's pivotal, what we're doing right now, it's very important that we get this thing right. But these two tonight, I know a little bit about the gentleman, who were the first who's been, their record's sort of impeccable, and their experience level, and their record is impeccable. And my understanding of Mr. One, of course, he has some understanding of that. I concur completely that these two, and I will lay later the leaders and run until you guys decide.
Well, you're part of it too, so...
Absolutely.
Oh, no, absolutely, and transparency is the key, and I promise you that I will open the doors and give them everything they need.
Great.
We are all in this together, this is our family, and we need to do the best best for our community. We all, it affects all of us.
Absolutely.
I was impressed with the...
All right, so do you want to check references on these two today?
I'm glad, might be a little limited this week, we'll have time next week, our next meeting's two weeks from now.
Yeah, because we're not meeting right until the 11th.
Yeah, glad to...
The dogs are so close.
The dogs are very similar between these two.
And hopefully, we can make a decision two weeks from tonight?
Yeah, that would be great. Let's plan on that.
It's pretty exciting. Those are talented people, and I think no-nonsense people, and boy, I think if we are straight with these people, we're going to get straight answers back.
Right, if I may, the gentleman, the first gentleman, who had quite a bit lower bid, he said he was going to come back with us, revise his proposal, has he done that?
No, I haven't seen it yet.
Okay, I'm curious about that.
Yeah, we'll see what he comes back with, but these were, these two were much more professional than he was.
Do you think that you would vote on the 11, on the 9/11?
I think we should try to, yeah.
Yeah, I think we'll try to.
So we can get the ball rolling here. We're not going to have any new information, we're just going to have the reference checks.
No, kind of.
Everything we have, everything now, okay.
So can I switch subjects?
Maybe. Oh, that's right, we passed you over.
Technology.
Okay.
Okay. You guys all settled?
Good night, chief.
Thank you, folks, very, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so very much, and maybe off one half hour.
So let me tell you what I'm showing you. Tara made up a list, and then I went through and kind of added my two cents to it. These are all the emails that we're thinking of putting on the system, okay? What I'd like you to do is go through these, and just see if you concur, not tonight.
Yep.
Okay. The ones that are in gray on the second page were ones that Tara had put, and I started adding, flushed it out.
Yeah.
Do we need them? I'm inclined that every board should have an email address. So that's what I've tried to do. Now, I don't, some, you'll notice there's no names, like I don't know who the chair, what I did was put in, the chair should be the focus, even if they pass it on to somebody else. We could always add another one if they want to have a clerk. But I'm not sure who the chair of the agricultural commission is, of the Jason Park, you can see Memorial Day. Colleen's got two that are public safety, I'm not sure which one she'd want to use. So it needs to be cleaned up a little, and then we'll give it to Mike Rodriguez, and then we'll set it up.
Okay.
The next piece of this is, all the ones that have existing emails, he will then bring their whole files over. Okay, so they will, the people who have existing emails won't have to do anything, except give, they'll have to give him his password. He'll make it so it's transparent, next time they go on, all their stuff will be right there. And at that point, we're going to have to tell people, from now on, you have to use the town emails, because of the open meeting law, because of the Freedom of Information Act, and we'll just start using them.
Okay.
We can have Mike come in and give us a demo of how the new software looks, you know, it's Outlook, but it's not the Outlook we've been looking at, it's the version that everybody's using in the office here. So whether you're inside or outside, it'll look the same, which is what I've been waiting for.
Nice, yeah, that will be nice.
So if you, you know...
I'm the Memorial Day Commission.
Right, do you want to be the person, as the person who gets all the, because people will be writing into these emails, this will be what's posted on the website. So if somebody says, gee, I want to write to the town administrator, that's going to be what's there.
You could still use my selectmen assistant, because it's actually my job description.
Do you want to be this specific?
Well, if somebody wants to write into the Memorial Day bill, they won't know.
But you could put it, if it was on the town website, it would be contact, and then the selectmen email.
All right, for that one, I think, you know, it's a once-a-year thing, it's no deal, big deal, but I think for the boards that have ongoing operations, they should.
Okay.
Just give me a thought.
Well, what I was thinking, I didn't, I don't know, with like conservation, do you want to have everybody have their name on it, or would they have like an alias, like Conservation One, Conservation Two, so you could punch new people in as positions change, rather than having to do a new email address? I don't know, I'm just, I just don't know, but we do have turnover.
I'm going to give this to Tara too, and I'll ask her, I've got you, her opinion on this stuff.
Yeah, absolutely.
She's really good at it.
I mean, it's nice to have the name, you know, when you're emailing somebody, but if they had an alias, I don't know.
So like Highway Surveyor, instead of being Jim McKay, it could be Highway Surveyor at Town?
Yes. It might just be easier to maintain that way, in case there's, you know, turnover.
And the yellow ones are the ones we're removing, so...
Perfect.
They go away.
Nice job.
Okay.
All right, all right, anything else? All right, this is a long meeting, I'll make a motion we adjourn.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.